Ready? All right. We're going to go ahead and call this September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one City of Gallatin Council Committee Meeting to Order. We'll have a roll call, please.
Councilman Alexander. Councilman Fann. Councilwoman George. Councilman Hayes.
Present.
Councilwoman Love.
Here.
Councilman Overton.
Here.
Vice Mayor Fennell is absent, but we do have a corner.
Thank you. All right, this time we'll have the approval of the minutes for the August twenty-four, two thousand twenty-one council work session agenda. We have a motion to approve, and we got a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. At this time, we will have public recognition. Would anybody like to speak from the public? Seeing no one. You know I was just kidding with you.
My name is Joe DeBoer, and I live at one double oh seven Hart Street here in Gallatin. I rise tonight to talk about an issue with regard to recreation in our community, with regard to Clearview Park. We have a, we have a, have a grant that's being worked on as far as getting some building built over there, which is going to be outstanding. But we have a little problem before we need to get, get started on a building. We're going to have to have a program over there. So I call on my good friend, the Right Reverend John D. Alexander, to have a revival over there. And the reason why we need a revival over there is because we need a group of people to get together at that facility and chat about what we're going to do in that, in that area. Now, one of the problems we've got right now is the fact that we're not using the building over there. It's not open. That ain't good. I can understand why, in a lot of respect. If you have no program, there's no use in having a building open. You're going to have to have a program to open it up. And the second thing is, we have a major problem. Mr. Brown can stand up here and preach about it all day. We have problems with people liking leaving a mess in a bathroom in our community. I don't care what you do, anything. I've talked to anybody that has kids. Chief Mandy back there tells us all about it because he got kids in the sports program. And you go in there, anywhere we have in our community, we have a problem with, with bathrooms being kept clean. So if we're going to open up that facility over there, number one, we're going to have to have somebody over there to keep it clean. Number two, we're going to have to have, and it's good to have the, the restrooms on the inside in order for us to monitor them better. Because I'm going to clue you in. I used to have a service, service station at the corner of Roanoke-Watauga, Johnson City, Tennessee, at one time. They had outside toilets. And I didn't have the boys clean them up because I was, I wouldn't even ask. Just that simple. I know about that stuff. It's trashy, it's inhumane, and a little responsibility would go a long way about keeping things straight. And it costs us money because somebody's not responsible. So with that being said, when Mr. John stands up there, and I would suggest he get his cohort in crime over there, Brother Staudler, and they preach on, on the premise of responsibility. Okay? If you want something, you have to be responsible to make sure that things happen. And it comes from the bottom up. In other words, that comes from the people out in the community. If they want something, they need to, we need to have a revival over there, Brother John, at your earliest convenience. I'll be there to make sure that the collection is took, and the gust of the people in, and greet them with a real smile on my face. So with that being said, ball's in our court, okay? We need to get her done. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Amen.
That wasn't too long, was it, Craig?
No, no, no.
All right, okay.
Three minutes, that's good. Anybody else? Anybody else? All right, if not, public recognition is closed. Mayor's comments?
Oh, I need your glasses. Toilet paper? Why you got toilet paper in your desk?
I don't, it's not.
I'm sorry, I could not resist. There's your entertainer.
It's a shared desk, by the way.
Yes, it is a shared desk between council and planning commission. So several things. First of all, I want to say a great big thank you to our Gallatin Fire Department for the wonderful nine eleven service this past weekend. So many people did things to honor this community, and I certainly want to mention them for their service. Also, I want to mention Grace Point Church, Little Bit of Heaven, who did some food for our first responders. Alexander Funeral Home, you probably saw their beautiful flag, a field of flags over there. They also fed first responders. And just so, so much going on, supporting our local first responders in memory of nine eleven and commemorating the twentieth anniversary. Also, I want to share with you the names of those who participated in the nine eleven stair climb from our Gallatin Fire Department. And I'm probably going to mispronounce a few names now, apologize, but I'm going to give it my best shot. I want you to know that these people from the Gallatin Fire Department all participated. Chad Lynn, Paul Riziliak, Brandon Hill, Clay Swafford, Greg Pack, Chris Collins, Colton Hawn, Timothy Cuss, PJ Bradford, TJ Sexton, Austin Brown, Nick Kirkendall, Sarah Minton, Kylie Taitano, Sean Raymond, Mike Finley, Cody Morgan, Tyler Rackey, Ben Sproul, DJ Bates, Ben West, Rich Goddard, Dustin Dunn, Garrick Thompson, and Andrew Farr. That's a large participation from our department, and there were some really new firefighters and some really senior ones, too. So we appreciate them doing that down there, and then all the folks that helped up here for what was going on here. Let's see. Want to mention, oh, this is good news I want to share with you. I should probably let Nick have the glory, but I know we want to move on in the interest of time. But we do have a notice to proceed to construction on our ITS, our Intelligent Traffic System. So we all should be cheering loudly for that. And we're even moving ahead on phase two, so that's exciting. Also, I want to congratulate the Gap. They had a big ribbon cutting last week for their huge investment in expansion that's going to keep them here in our community, employing people for a long time into our future. And I think that is all of my announcements this evening, unless there's something I'm forgetting. I'm looking at the department head table. I don't see anybody saying prompt, prompt, prompt. Okay, that would be all, thank you.
That's it? Okay, moving on to the agenda, and if everybody didn't care, I know, Mayor, you've got to leave early, right?
I do, yes.
We're going, we're going to move number nine up to number one. Is everybody okay with that?
I'd also like to get eight in there as well, because I'm the one with the information on that.
Okay, let's, let's move eight to number one, nine to number two, is that okay? So we're on, if everybody's okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Item number eight, we've got discussion of improvements to Big Station Camp Boulevard, and Mayor?
Okay. I just want to share with you, I have had, I couldn't even tell you how many discussions and suggestions that I have made over the past couple of years to try and get Station Camp situation rectified. Mayor Clary has now made a suggestion. His suggestion is that there be a cost-sharing arrangement whereby Southeastern does the project, and then the City of Gallatin, Sumner County, Hendersonville, and the Rogers Group each contribute a percentage not to exceed thirty-five thousand dollars. Sumner County, it has gone to their Highway Committee, and it passed their Highway Committee to go to the commission. I'm thinking, obviously, Hendersonville is in support of it. I do not know Rogers Group's position on it. And then I have put on your desk a letter that we have gotten from Southeastern, or actually, it was a, a letter sent to Mayor Clary, but we were copying on it, so I've put it on the desk for your review. And so what I am seeking is two things. One, input from Ms. Haimekali as to whether or not we can legally participate in this. It is going to become our road once it is improved. And then, secondly, you all's feelings on if we should proceed towards allocating the funds for that.
Discussion?
I think we're in a conundrum at the moment because the road is currently not owned by anyone. So it's not owned by a private interest, and because Gallatin will eventually own that road, I do think that it would be legal for us to use taxpayer dollars for that portion of the road.
Motion to move the thirty-five thousand onto the.
Thank you. Got a motion by Mr. Overton, second by Fann? Any discussion? I got a question, Richard. And, and I don't know if we, I don't know how long this is going to take. I'm sure it's going to take a while, but if you drive down that road, the other day we were riding bikes down that road, there's a huge pothole. Can y'all take care of that?
Is it in that section?
Yeah, it's in this section we're talking about.
It's in this section, yes.
Can, is there something y'all can do for that or not? I mean, is it? I mean, it's huge. It's, somebody's going, I mean, I don't know about the liability issue of it, but a car's going to hit it, and it's going to knock the tire.
But we don't have liability, I feel sure on that. Now, I worry that if we did.
We get multiple claims, and we, the city does not accept those because it's not our road yet. It will be our road, so we refer those to Hendersonville and the county, and they fight it out.
Oh, up until just a few weeks ago, the last conversation I had with Hendersonville had actually been sending a crew out to fix potholes as of three weeks ago.
I talked to Jamie Clary this morning or yesterday morning, and he said they weren't going to do it.
Said they were done with it?
You might try reaching out to their street department.
I will.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other discussion? All those in favor?
It's a mess, it needs to be done.
Okay, all those in favor? Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, item number nine, redistricting, redistricting discussion. Lori, you want to take over this for a little bit?
So Lori Smiley, CIO for the city, Jeff. Okay, he's got it. So I just want to remind everybody really quickly where we're at. This is our current council district picture, given the census blocks that we have, so that those have all been seen. A recap, we have four proposals that were presented two weeks ago, and there was a fifth proposal that Councilman Overton requested I come up with and see if we could make, if the numbers would work. So the first proposal, again, meets all the parameters. I highlighted the, the smaller deviations, point seven oh percent. The highest was two point two zero percent. For proposal two, well, and the total minority percent there was forty-six point five five. Proposal two gave us a deviation point four five four percent, and the highest was one point seven five percent. So from that perspective, that is a better number. But, let's see, and the total minority was forty-seven point nine one percent. Proposal three and four, again, all of these are really sort of close, but the relative deviation, the highest was three point two eight percent. Lowest deviation we had from the ideal number was one point oh eight percent, with a total minority percent of fifty-seven point six three percent. Proposal four had relative deviation from point thirteen percent to two point two eight percent. Total minority fifty-two point sixteen. So there's not a whole lot of, a lot of difference between the spread there. So this is proposal five. I went ahead and just for the, for discussion for the public, we made it a little bigger. As you can see, the District Five kind of takes in that Winchester Baptist Church. District Two is spread out to the west now, and District Three was compacted down to, to the bottom, kind of, what is that, south, central, south, south central? I'm not really good at that. So that would be the fifth proposal now that you have before you. On those numbers, relative deviation, the, the lowest was, or the point seven oh percent was the lowest, one point seven two percent was the highest, and the total minority percentage on that one was forty-six point five five percent. So those are the five proposals we've come up with.
Anybody have any discussion on it? I mean, to me, it looks like, just looking at them, I've looked at them, and looked at them, and it looks like number two is probably the most even distributed as far as numbers go.
That's what I felt like, too. I felt like that, too.
Like number two. I mean, it, it looks like it's got the most even number, so.
Let, let me offer some considerations I think you ought to have as you look at this, and this is just my opinion. I mean, I guess some of the opinions are universal, but obviously, the numbers need to be similar across the districts. I think it's important to keep as many people as we can on the same voting cycle. And then I think that each district should retain as many of its original members as possible. And I know that, you know, you're going, I guess your district probably loses half of them, right?
Third town.
But, but, I mean, you're still, you know, retaining what you can there. And then finally, and, and really, Councilman Alexander, I lean on you on this, but I would think that we would want that District Five to have as high of a minority population as possible because, you know, that, that, that supports having a minority representative in that district in perpetuity. But again, I lean on you for that consideration.
And I think number two fits most of those, that criteria, so.
I think two and three both do.
Yeah.
One was higher than the other.
I got some more to yous.
Three, I think, is, hold on. Three is actually the highest in minority. However, it does spread out District Two across the city. Number four, I think, is the second highest with fifty-two point sixteen percent. That kind of.
Yeah, I think I like two and four. That's what I think.
I like two the best, but, all right, Councilman Overton, she has some.
Yeah. You know, years ago, when we redistricted the last time, it was about four or five years into my term, and I was considered the new kid on the block, I guess, and I got hit really hard last go-round. And this go-round with the one through four, I'm even getting hit harder than I was on that one, and take the biggest hit of anybody. You're losing people, Clary.
I'm losing.
But, but you got the whole entire district, and, and you're not gaining any new residents, okay? You're actually losing residents.
Well, I have to, I mean, but I'm, I'm losing.
I understand, I'm not saying that, but, but you've got the same anywhere, anywhere we go. But on number five is, is a fair proposal. But, but as I said, th- these other proposals are taking, are taking my district again and destroying my district again. And, and I just feel like that I've been on here long enough that I, I don't feel like I should be hit as hard as, as they're hitting me again on this, on this round, so. I think five, I think five works really well.
What's it doing to Eileen, though?
You know, Eileen's, and I love Eileen, I really do, but she's still got her subdivision in her district, and.
That's all I have, that's all she's got. Yeah, her district, i- if, if we went with five, and this was just some math that I looked at today, if we were to go with five, she would retain less than a thousand people in her current district.
Out of eight thousand something, yeah.
And, and, and it would do that thing that I'm really worried about, and, and change a lot of people's voting cycle. That's the nice thing about how the west side of the city kind of has the same voter, voting cycle. It wouldn't change a lot of that whole western part with any of the earlier proposals.
That's only going to walk forward.
And then I, you know, I really think it's, and, and I guess I really, I'm going to say it anyway, although, you know, I'm, certainly my role is not affected by it, but I think we need to take our personal and, you know, what your district is out of it, and, you know, what makes the most sense. And I think those things I said are really important. You know, keeping the same voting cycles, keeping as much of an original district as you can, of course, keeping the numbers even, and then that minority representation.
But on these proposals, you're not keeping much in my district. You're taking, you're taking Nichols Lane off of me and Peach Valley Road, which is right there by my house. You're taking all those away from me. I mean, and it's right there by my house.
But how much of your po, how much of, we didn't look at that, how much of his district is he, I mean, what population-wise can you tell of his district that he's, that that district retains?
For, in the second proposal, now I didn't look at the number as far as where he is today and where it would go. See, right, I mean, right now, as far as his, I don't know that you can really look at any of our, the current districts because, like, Craig has, what, sixteen, fourteen thousand, I think, and yours are sixteen thousand.
That's what I'm saying, I'm losing six thousand people, you know. I lost that many last time. You can't go based on that.
I really think that that district does still retain, even though it's Nichols Lane coming out. And so I do think that a lot of that large, more, more heavy, more densely populated area is still in the same district it was in, when you start looking at, like, Twin, Twin Eagles and.
Not, that's not my district. No, it's not.
That's your, that's this district.
What's that?
Eagles?
No.
What?
Twin Eagles in my district.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, and that remains.
That remains in there.
That's what I look at when I say some of those densely populated areas.
No.
Ambridge Farms?
No, on number two, no, mm-mm. Twin Eagles on number two, if that's what y'all are talking about, is, is, is in John D.'s district now. Huh? Yeah. I believe any of, any, number one is in John D.'s district. Number two's in John D.'s district.
Kind of the original, like, the current districting map where you can put up there easily, or no?
That one?
Number four puts Twin Eagles in my district. And now flip, flip through them if you would, please, Ms. Smiley.
I'm telling you.
Is there a way that you can put each one up against, against what we have right now to compare slides? That one with number one next to it, and that one with number two next to it?
Well, number one is, this is, that's not the way, the way it is now is here.
This, this is the current, I mean, e, this is just a presentation that I've put together. If I were to, if I could easily do that or quickly do that.
Well, don't worry about doing it right now.
But I can create a presentation, if you want to carry it to the next work session, or whenever, I can create a presentation that has the maps next to each other for you, and maybe print it on the eleven by seventeen as well, so you would have it. I can have that for you next week.
I didn't get any of this since I wasn't here that, during that, that last work session.
I, I do think it would be interesting, too, to look at original population retain, you know, original constituents consistent between current district and proposed district.
Yeah, and I mean, that is kind of on these, on these right now, as far as what we currently have. So currently, for example.
I don't mean popula, I don't mean the numbers associated with each district. I'm talking about, like, you know, the data where Ms. Georgia's district retains only seven hundred and eighty-five of her current district, the new district versus the old district, see what I'm saying?
So, okay.
I mean, is that?
Like, how many constituents are in each district now compared to what it's going, what it is?
Well, no, no, no.
What was until now.
That's already that way. I'm talking about the, the, the actual constituents, they're consistent between the old district and the new district.
Right.
The ones that are not, the people who are, the number of people that would not be changing districts. That's what I'm looking for. But that may just be an incredible burden to put on you.
I mean, so if you take the numbers, I guess I want to make sure I'm clear. So if I take the numbers that we have right now in these districts, as they stand with the census blocks, those numbers are on the original, the original.
Right, but I'm saying who the constituents are actually changed because the districts are changing. The only person who is retaining probably a hundred percent of constituents that were in his existing district would be Councilman Hayes, because, yeah.
Well, that's where all the.
Not significantly, but.
Whereas I'm guessing that, you know, Councilman Overton's district's probably fifty percent new constituents and a loss of twenty-five, twenty percent existing constituents.
Right.
And then Councilwoman George's is probably twenty to thirty percent new constituents. And Councilman Alexander probably the same, and Councilwoman Love probably fifteen percent. That's, I mean, I'm just guessing, you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, I could try to come up with something like that. So taking this and what we, what we would take away, how many that would be for each proposal?
Talk to that.
Anybody else have any discussion on it? I mean, does anybody got any, do y'all want, anybody want to make a motion, go on with it, or what, or?
I think we need to put it on the next work session.
How much time do we have?
Yeah, how much time do we have?
Really need to get it to.
If we do, we can go to first reading and then always discuss it, but I'd like to see us make a motion that we move on with number two.
I can move.
All right, you got a motion, I'll make a second.
Seconded.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 No.
Anybody opposed?
No.
No.
You going number two?
Three knows.
I mean, I, I just think we need a little more discussion before we really.
We are, I mean, it's just going first reading, we got to have two readings, yeah.
It's really so confusing right now, but if you, you know, if you compare from the original, your original district to maybe proposal number two or proposal number three, then you have a clear view.
Would you have a, do you have a, one you want to go with?
Not in particular.
I mean, I don't see what other kind of information she's going to give us.
Oh, I do, yeah. If, if I could see, I, I just think we need more discussion on it.
Well, I, I agree.
We've got, it's an ordinance, so it has to go through two readings. So we could do first reading and then work session.
But what I'm saying, I don't, I don't think we at the point at this time where we all be voting on either district.
It just fails, so we'll put it on the work session.
That's just my opinion.
Okay, we've got, right now, we got three, three, so it's a tie. So Mayor, you break the tie.
I support moving it ahead in the interest of time.
Okay, all right, all right, motion carries. We're moving on to, I guess, what, next council meeting?
You, you asked me about time, let me do, address that. Ms. Ashley is concerned about getting the data so that voting cards can go out at the first of the year. Um, I just don't want us to get held up and not have it to later than the first of December.
And, and Lori, anything you can, anything you can get us, you know, that's fine. I mean, I don't, I don't know what else we can get, I mean...
Well, I will do, um, a comparison between...
I get what's happening, but I just don't understand. I don't want you to get us anything you can get us.
Will we be talking about other proposals here in the next session?
You want to, yeah. I mean, yeah, just anything's on the table. Like, like I said, if you got a better proposal, or if you like number five, switching the whole district?
No, I like number four.
Oh.
So, so two, four, and five are the three, or should I do it for all district, all of the maps? Do the comparison from where it is now to what we would be missing?
I'd do it for all five districts.
Okay.
That's, five proposals. Five.
All right, thank you, Lori. All right, moving on, we're back to number one now. Um, we got Dangerous Building, six forty-seven Pay Street.
Craig, who voted in favor and who voted against it last time?
Uh, against, against, in favor, in favor, against, in favor, and in favor. Connie's got it over there, right? Connie's got it if you need it. Go ahead if you're ready.
Kevin Black, Building Codes Department, uh, we're requesting a show cause hearing on six forty-seven Pay Street. It's continuing to deteriorate. Nothing's been done. It's unsafe and uninhabitable.
So, so do we just need to vote to have a show cause hearing?
Yes, and I, I am proposing that if you move any of these, that you move forward for a show cause hearing that we set those for October the nineteenth.
Most approve.
Okay, you got a motion by Councilwoman Overton, her second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman George. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Uh.
Uh, anybody oppose? Motion carries. All right, item number two, six fifty-six Chamber Street, Dangerous Building.
Situation, we're requesting a show cause hearing because it's continuing to deteriorate. Roofs are collapsing.
Okay, October ninth?
October nineteenth is the date I'm requesting.
All right, all right. Uh, do I hear a motion?
Approve.
Motion, Councilwoman Overton, second.
Second.
Second by Fan. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Uh.
Anybody oppose? Motion carries. Item number three, two fifteen South Boyers Avenue, Dangerous Building.
Requesting a show cause hearing on this one also, in deterioration.
Do I hear a motion?
Most approve.
Councilwoman Overton, second by Councilwoman Fan. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Uh.
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion carries. Item number four, seven oh nine Demoss Street, Dangerous Building.
Requesting a show cause hearing on this item also.
Motion to approve.
Uh, Councilwoman George, second. Councilwoman Love. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Uh.
Anybody oppose? Motion carries. Number five, uh, ten twenty-three West Avenue, Dangerous Building.
Requesting a show cause hearing on this item again.
Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right, Councilwoman Love, second by Councilwoman Alexander, I mean, uh, yeah. I'm getting all confused, all right. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion carries. All right, item number six, Dangerous Building, ten twenty-five West Street.
Requesting a show cause hearing on this item.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion carries. Item number seven, Dangerous Building, six fourteen Peach Valley Road.
Requesting a show cause hearing on this item.
Hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Okay. Craig, I got one question on that. Is this guy still in the house?
No, this house has been vacant for years.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Did you get the motion second? Who's second?
Steve.
Councilwoman Fan, did you second that?
I did.
Okay. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion carries. I think that's the end of the Dangerous Buildings.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, number ten, uh, naming of the roadway of Albert Gallatin Hat and Track Extension Project.
Oh, Nick Tuttles, City Engineer, uh, just a little over a month ago, the council considered some naming options for the new construction project that we have, the Albert Gallatin Avenue slash Hat and Track Road Extension. You sent your opinions back to the Planning Commission, and they proposed something different than what you all had suggested to begin with. So, um, I actually don't have it to pull up, but just a reminder what the city council was, was asking to be considered. The section of Albert Gallatin Avenue that runs in front of the Civic Center was to be renamed to East Albert Gallatin Avenue. Uh, the section that is between Dobbins Pike and Bligh, that's now named Northwater Avenue, would stay Northwater Avenue. And then the section that is being constructed now, that will be brand new, that goes from the end of Bligh all the way out to State Route one oh nine, would be called West Albert Gallatin Avenue. Uh, that's what the council was, was requesting to be taken a look at. The Planning Commission felt that it was important to provide more consistency, and so their recommendation was to change the name of Northwater Avenue to West Albert Gallatin Avenue to match the piece that would go out to Highway one oh nine. Uh, so they agreed with East Albert Gallatin Avenue on the east side and West Albert Gallatin Avenue on the new piece that's being built, uh, but, but their opinion was that, that we should change the name of Northwater Avenue to West Albert Gallatin Avenue. And so, uh, we have ran both options by E nine one one, and both are okay. Um, so it's this council's, uh, opinion and decision as to which direction you want to go. Uh, we've included draft resolutions for both options, just not knowing which way you may want to go with it.
Craig, you talking about only from the red, from the red light at Dobbins Pike to where it picks up? You're not talking about from, from Main Street or Nashville, Nashville Pike, whatever you wanna call it, Broadway? You're not talking about from Broadway up to the red light, correct, changing that one too?
So, what, what the Planning Commission was recommending was just like what the, the city council wanted for that section between Dobbins Pike and Highway thirty-one E. Uh, you all had said that you would like to call that East Albert Gallatin Avenue, so there would be a, a slight name change there, but I don't think that will be an inconvenience to, uh, the folks that, that have addresses on that section, but it will be a slight name change. Um, both the Planning Commission and City Council had that same recommendation for that section. The only difference is really that middle piece. Um, and, and so what you would end up with, with the Planning Commission's recommendation is if you started at thirty-one E and drove along this roadway all the way to one oh nine, you would drive East Albert Gallatin Avenue until you got to Dobbins Pike. And then as you continued through that intersection, it would become West Albert Gallatin Avenue all the way out to one oh nine.
Got a lot of houses, businesses up through there. Apartment, complexes.
That's, that was the concern of the council when we, we discussed it. There's, uh...
I mean, I think they'd be...
Seven homes and then a number of businesses that are all of them.
Are you talking about?
Yeah, they're, they're...
We're talking...
The, the name change would not affect that many people.
Just the section of West Albert Gallatin, or I'm sorry, the section of Northwater Avenue.
Yeah, the Nor, the Northwater Avenue people are the ones that I'm most worried about. The ones that in, are in the existing Albert Gallatin, then it becomes East, East.
Yes.
They're still gonna get their mail. I mean, I'm north, I always get my mail, and I don't, I don't even use that address. So I think they'll still get their mail, but, um...
Had a lot more people that got their addresses changed when we changed Dorothy Jordan. Had a lot more people affected.
Well, on, on Northwater, you have all those warehouses and businesses down in there. And of course, when you're talking about a business doing what they do, you've got trucks with addresses, you've got stationery, you've got business cards, you've got, you know, all your filings.
They had on Bligh Street, they still had to change it. Still had to change it.
I, I understand, but I'm...
When we changed, uh, uh, Bligh Avenue to Dorothy Jordan Avenue.
Right, but I mean, I'm just, I'm giving you...
For the inconvenient people, either way you go, but, you know, you have to adjust with the time, I guess.
Well, if you don't change it, it doesn't. That's, that was the ask of those businesses, so...
I like the consistency of the name.
I do too, but I understand where they're coming from with their ask, and because they brought it to me, I feel the commitment to bring it to you all.
So what's everybody think?
Move forward.
With which proposal? With what the Planning Commission?
We put a draft, uh, resolution for both options.
Right.
For you all to, to make a decision on one, so is prepared to go either way.
The one is East and West Albert.
Correct. The, the difference between the two options is that section of Northwater Avenue remaining as Northwater or being named West Albert Gallatin Avenue.
Talking about the section up to the red light?
Between Dobbins Pike and Bligh that goes over the railroad track, that short section, it's...
Catfish Pond.
Yeah.
North, yeah, but Northwater, Northwater's still gonna extend up to the red light.
Yes, sir. That will not change.
That's what I was asking about, Northwater.
No, no, I'm sorry, I, that...
I said, I said from Broadway up to the red light.
Well, when you said that, I thought you were talking about...
That's still Northwater.
He thought you were talking about like from, like...
Oh, I said from Broadway to the red light.
Well, he thought you meant from another side of the park.
No, my bad, so...
Yeah, 'cause when you said apartments, I was like...
I said apartments on it, that's what's on it.
Yeah, yeah.
I thought, there's apartments on both those, but...
I confused the neighborhood, it's gonna be real confused.
Where's the apartments on the other one, he's talking about the short section?
Yeah.
There's no apartments on that.
All right, so is that, is that a motion, Councilwoman George?
Talking all access to the light, are you talking? The cemetery to the light?
Yeah, I'm good with that.
We've got a motion. We, excuse me, we got a motion on, we're gonna name it East and West, all right? Do I hear a second?
Did you second?
Okay, we got a second. All right, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion carries.
Okay.
You good with that, Nick?
I, I'm perfectly fine with either option.
All right, item number eleven.
Uh, item number eleven is, uh, an acceptance of public improvements in the Woods Commons Section One subdivision. This is adjacent to the Drive-In subdivision, which is Record Row and Memory Lane. And we actually have item number... Item number...
Craig, I got a question.
Yes.
How much of a hassle would it be just to have Albert Gallatin from the bypass to Broadway? Why do we need an East and West?
You could do that.
Would it affect the numbering, the current numbering?
Yeah, we...
Yeah, 'cause we're kinda looking at East and West if we kept Northwater there, so...
Yeah, that, that's...
We what now?
That way it wouldn't affect that first part.
I, I say that, but here, here's the issue with that, man, we, we actually did... Well, the, the address is along Albert Gallatin Avenue, the existing piece of Albert Gallatin Avenue. It basically started at zero at Dobbins Pike, and they run up as you go to Highway thirty-one E. So if we name it all Albert Gallatin Avenue, we are gonna have to change the numbers on the existing piece of Albert Gallatin Avenue.
That's less burden on them to do East and West.
Correct, that's why, yeah, uh, I'm, that's why we suggested to, to do it that way. I'd forgotten for a moment, yeah. So you could do it, but now you're changing the numbering of the Civic Center, the numbers of, you know, the Dollar General Store and other businesses there.
All right. Anything else? Steve, you good? Okay, all right, number eleven.
Again, Woods Commons, you've got, uh, Record Row and Memory Lane, um, unanimous recommendation from the Planning Commission.
Do I hear a motion?
I move, move, move it into council.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Councilwoman Overton. Uh, any discussion on this? All those in favor sending it on?
Uh.
Anybody oppose? Motion carries. All right, item number twelve, Nick, you're still up.
Another unanimous recommendation from the Planning Commission to accept public improvements in the Carrollton subdivision. Uh, this includes several different roads, including a, a long section of Carrollton Drive that goes back at the end.
Got a motion, Councilwoman Overton, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Ms. George, any discussion? All those in favor?
Uh.
Anybody oppose? Motion carries. Item number thirteen, Nick?
Another unanimous recommendation for acceptance of improvements. This is just a, a short section of Memory Lane.
Most approve.
Kevin, motion by Councilwoman Overton, is there a second? Councilwoman George, any discussion? All those in favor?
Uh.
Aye.
Motion carries. Rachel, your turn's up. Number fourteen.
Next week at the council meeting, I would like to request an amendment to the appropriation where we had the carryover funds. I failed to list, uh, one more project that should have been on there. It's twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and ten dollars for repairs to the concrete at, um, Fire Station Three. We were coordinating that at the same time that they did the EMS addition, and I just failed to include that on our list.
We'll send it on.
Have a motion, Councilwoman Overton, second by Council, Councilwoman Alexander. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Fifteen, financial reports for June and July.
Financial reports for June and July. Uh, July's not that notable because we're just now getting the year started. June reports are very nice. They start around page one sixty in your packet. The general fund revenue exceeded the general fund expenditures by almost five million dollars for the year, which was very nice. Um, that does include the two million dollars that we reimbursed ourselves from the bond fund for the land that was purchased the prior year. So that makes it look a little different, but sales tax revenues were, um, three million dollars higher than we had budgeted. Golf course did well, did higher than they were budgeted. The pool, uh, came close to budget, um, very close. The Civic Center took a hit for their budget, but they did well compared to revenues and expenses, but just for what we had budgeted, it didn't quite, um, hit where we were going. Uh, the main, the remainder of the revenue lines that were short were mostly from grants, and it's just the timing of the grant and the project and how far along we're into it. But overall, the general fund had a really good year. Um, all the other funds did well. There is on page, um, precisely page one seventy-two, the water sewer fund for last year. It looks a little odd as well. Um, it looks as though we spent seven point four million more than we brought in, but the year before, right in June, Facebook made a large donation of eight point four million to go towards their project. Several of those expenditures were in this fiscal year, but the revenue came in the year before, so I just wanted to mention that, um, on those two things. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions for Ms. Nichols? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job, all right. Item number sixteen.
Still me. Richard might wanna come up here with me. Uh, we are appropriating the funds for the VW grant. We were awarded, but we need to get the money on the books. When we bid the vehicles, they did come in slightly higher than we anticipated. In the Environmental Services Fund, we'll be using a little over fifty-nine thousand of their fund balance. And then for the general fund, we'll be using about nine thousand of the fund balance to get the vehicles that were, um, discussed. Anything you wanna add?
I was just gonna, just wanted to touch on that. The, uh, the refuse trucks went up roughly thirty thousand dollars each from November of last year until about two months ago when I got the new bids. So that was the big reason, and then the, uh, Tandal Maxwell Dump Truck went up about twenty thousand, so that's a reason for the addition.
Got a motion by Councilwoman Alexander to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Councilwoman Fan. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Uh.
Anybody oppose? Motion carries, all right. Rachel, number seventeen.
Um, this is for the T-Dot Multimodal Grant. That's the Ball State Gap Trail. Um, again, just getting the budget appropriated for these projects that have been awarded.
Most approve.
Have a motion, Councilwoman Overton, is there a second? Second. Mr. Alexander, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion carries, all right. Item eighteen. Item 18.
And this is appropriating funds for the CMAC ITS Phase 2 project.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose, motion carries.
Thank you.
Ends Rachel. Item number 19. Connie.
Good evening. During the budget process, we looked at surveyor duties for the city. We did a classification at a GT. Nick and I recently reviewed and readdressed those duties, and we'd like to do a reclass at a GS, a grade of a GS. So, that's what I'm asking approval for.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion, is there a second? Second.
Play that one more time, I didn't hear all of it.
Sure, during the pro, the budget process, we looked at the duties for what we're calling a city surveyor. It was passed at that time at a grade GT. Nick and I have been doing some reviewing of those duties and responsibilities, and we feel the classification would be better at a grade GS. And so I'm asking council to approve that, and that's what I'm here for tonight.
Yeah, first.
Did?
Yeah, first, and you second.
I got one question.
Second by Fan, is there a discussion?
I got one question. Why are we reclassifying now, do we not do this in budget hearings, budget time?
We did, we did do it during budget hearing, but we, after we reviewed the duties and looked at all the responsibilities, we felt it was a better fit at that grade.
How much more is this?
Um. It is less.
It's lower.
It's a lower grade.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Uh.
Anybody oppose, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Alright, item number 20. Chief Bandy.
Don Bandy, Police Department, this is asking permission to create a property maintenance board of appeals, to be in compliance with the international, big long thing, property maintenance code. And that's to deal with specific incidences where we have, again, specific, I guess, issues to deal with.
Currently, we just don't have any teeth right now that our property maintenance officer can go out and we can bring them in for $50 fine, that's not gonna do much. And so we need some teeth to allow our property maintenance officer to be able to correct some issues that are out in the city. In order to do that, we have to have an appeals board, and so that's really all this is doing, is establishing that appeals board. If this passes, then we'll be bringing a resolution to also naming people on that board. I believe that there are some people on the Board of Construction Appeals that have agreed to serve on this board, and they would be qualified per the International Property Maintenance Code.
Most approved.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose, motion carries.
Thank you.
Alright, item number 21, Mr. De Priest.
This is a ordinance appropriating insurance recovery money, and there was a vehicle accident on East Main Street back in March, and it damaged one of their, destroyed pedestrian bridge. We got it rebuilt and was able to recover some money for that.
Most is.
Have a motion by Councilman Alexander, second by Mr. Overton, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose, motion carries. Alright, Mr. De Priest, number 22.
This is a environmental services and a recycling annual report from 2020, 2021. In your packet, there's this spreadsheet and has all the highlights. One of the biggest thing with environmental services was the net revenue, it actually was, was in the negative, just from the amount of tipping fees and maintenance on vehicles, just cost of salaries, I mean, everything added up, but of course, with the new $16 a month, this, that's what that's gonna help out. Anybody has any specific questions on it? You can tell the recycling numbers, everything increased except for the paper, cardboard was increased significantly. Here to answer any questions, if anybody has any.
Anybody have any questions on that? Okay, thank you, Richard. 23, Mr. McCord.
Bill McCord, the city planner, well, we were making such good progress until now.
Yeah, that's what we thought, here goes, we've been houring, and it'll take two, an hour on these two next.
We hope not. Okay, this first item is a request to make some minor, what I call minor amendments to the zoning code, the temporary use and occupancy permit section, and it's really a cleanup ordinance, and it will deal with the temporary structures that are being placed around town of various types. It also removes some inconsistencies and just cleans up some language. There might be some minor little changes, you might wanna make, pay attention on page four of the draft ordinance there, that limits some certain types of temporary use permits to seven consecutive days, you might want to evaluate that. There's a lot of different timeframes that are allocated for certain types of temporary use permits, so if you want to adjust those now, it'd be an appropriate time to do so. A lot of, some of these temporary use permits are allowed to exist for up to 60 days, so as a good example would be the food or fruit stand, vegetable stand, so forth, that's up there on the old Miracle Ford site. They are allowed to operate for six months, so what they'll have to do to comply with this ordinance is remove that temporary building that they have once they cease operations, their six-month period is told. So just want you to pay close attention to the draft ordinance, and it's presented to you tonight and in your agenda package as underlining for new language or replacement language, you slide through for that language, it would be removed. So if you have any concerns about the particular tolling of certain, of these temporary uses and our activity structures, let me know, and I'll be glad to make the appropriate changes if that's what you want to do.
Any questions for Mr. McCord?
So all of these changes that are in here now were made by you?
They were made and endorsed by the planning commission as well, yes, they've been through the planning commission, I failed to mention that, the planning commission recommends approval of these changes.
So, so just like the Miracle property you're talking about, do they recommend that we reduce to six months?
No, there, there's, it still stands at six months for that particular type of activity. Not all activities are treated that way, so it depends on what they're doing. For example, an assembly meeting has a limit on 15 days, so there, it just depends on what they're doing, for how long, a carnival and so forth, they are limited to 15 days, circus is limited.
What about a, what, let me ask you this question, just, just an example, what about the, like taco truck at Quick Zack up there?
That is covered, and this is described also in this ordinance on page seven. That was taken out of, because there was some confusion as to the intent of what council wanted to do in regards to food trucks. So that's, that is now covered under the new ordinance that y'all passed a week, a month or so ago.
For a food truck?
It only deals with food trucks, so that, that structure, and the, and the building official can probably explain this in more detail. That is, could be a food truck, but it's not probably going to pass the requirements of the new ordinance that you.
Oh, they will, they will probably have to do something about that then, right?
Yes, and it's, and it's, it's not a permitted use where it is now, even under the old ordinance, so that is a.
So he, he would have to comply with the new food truck ordinance that we did, and if he doesn't, I mean, he's gonna, I mean, he can't sit there, I guess, every day, all day, 24 hours a day.
Right, as y'all may recall, the food truck ordinance requires that food truck to be moved at the end of the day, moved to a.
I, I'm assuming that y'all are gonna.
It's gonna be fun to enforce.
Okay.
So do you enforce that?
I'm sorry?
Do you enforce that, your department?
Yes, we will. Well, well, we'll coordinate with the other departments for enforcement.
Okay, cuz the changes, I mean, a lot of them are not gonna know about these changes.
Uh, yeah, we're trying to get the word out, we've had some come in already, some are gonna be disappointed with.
The people who have the, the, the food trucks are aware, and they were kind of the ones pushing most of the food trucks. Now, some of those that are not, they say they're food trucks, but they're stationary and they're not moving, they may not be aware. I, I do think that our codes director had an issue with one, I think it was today, that had a similar issue. We were not able to issue a permit because it wasn't mobile.
Definition for a food truck is unique to someone who happens to vend food and not in a food truck that's a commercial-type kitchen. And the ice cream trucks are under the old, other ordinance as well, so. So, again, the planning commission did review this and made recommendations for approval. I do want you to take the time, cuz there's a lot of intricate type of changes here, and they do have different tolling periods for different uses.
Yes.
Quite unique.
Any other discussion, is there a motion, send it on?
Yeah, I got one, Bill. So like the barbecue truck that's in front of the warehouse on Red River, that's completely different, correct? Cuz y'all have already made that.
Yeah, that one, that one got approved, I think in 2012 or something, or 11 or 12 or somewhere like that, as a site plan.
Right, okay, I just wanted to be sure.
That doesn't meet the architectural requirements, and I'm not sure how it got approved, but they're essentially grandfathered in, that, and the taco shack at the bottom of the hill down by the creek is, was done about the same time.
Taco shack where?
At, at the bottom of the hill down by the creek on Eastland.
Alright, do I hear a motion, send it on?
Send it on.
Have a motion, Overton, anybody else, second?
Second.
Second. Councilwoman George, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Uh.
Aye.
Anybody oppose, motion carries. 24, Mr. McCord.
Council, this next item is a request also to amend the zoning code to allow for short-term rental units. There's been some changes, big changes, I would call, that have occurred in the middle of the process for us developing this ordinance. Initially, we were developing this ordinance based on direction from the council to essentially, essentially prohibit them in residential areas. Midway through the process, we were made aware of a court decision, Hendersonville case, that essentially says you can't do that, and I'll let Susan talk about that if you have questions about that. So fortunately, and perhaps for our purposes of moving forward in an ordinance to address and regulate these activities, is that we now are aware of our limitations, at least as a city, in regards to legality of, of addressing short-term rentals. And because of that, what we are doing is proposing to permit them, but have regulations. And a lot of these regulations that are included, contained in this draft ordinance are those that we used from other cities who adopted similar regulations. So we didn't, we're not recreating the will, we're just borrowing from other communities. And the planning commission has discussed these two or three different meetings, and was wanting assurance that some of these provisions were included in our ordinance, and which, of course, which we did. So what we've done is we've defined what short-term rentals are. Short-term rentals are unique, and they were created by the state legislature a few years ago. They are not bed and breakfast, although they operate pretty much in the same type of way, but they are unique, they have a separate designation in the statute, and again, based on the court decision, they are allowed in residential areas. They are, we also have defined those, again, in our code, we've listed them as a residential activity as well as a commercial activity as a type of transit habitation use. So in areas where we allow commercial uses as transit habitation, like hotels, what it really is, why they use the term transit habitation, we would also then identify short-term rentals as a permissible use. So what we're proposing here is to add them as a permitted use in the agricultural residential zone, the R-40 residential, low-density residential zone, the R-20 zone, the R-15 zone, the R-10 zone, the R-8 zone, the R-6 zone. That's, that pretty much covers our residential districts. It'd also be allowed use in the MRO zoning district, in the MU zoning district, in the MUG zoning district, in the MUL zoning district, both as commercial as well as residential use, in the GO residential district with a conditional use permit, cuz all residential activities are conditional use in that zoning district, and in the OR district as a permitted use. In the commercial districts, they'd be allowed in the central, of course, commercial district, which essentially the downtown area, both as a residential use and as a transit habitation use, commercial activity. They'd also be allowed in the CS district and the CG district, again, transit habitation is also allowed in that district, and in the PGC district as transit habitation, would be allowed as a conditional use in the planned neighborhood commercial district. We also establish parking requirements, and this is one of the things that may end up disqualifying some properties from being able to achieve a short-term rental on their property, especially if they're small parcels or lots. So we would establish a parking requirement of one space for 1,000 square feet minimum, and one space for 500 square feet, or one, one-quarter space per bedroom, whichever is greater. Again, we described short-term rentals in the supplementary district regulations as well, which is where the, the bulk of the body of the description and the restrictions are for short-term rentals. I want to draw your attention to pages 13 and 14 primarily, which is, again, it's identifying short-term rental activity, establishing where they're allowed, and requiring a registry. So any body who wants to operate a short-term rental in the city will have to register their units, and there are operating requirements, which I mentioned earlier, which means they have to apply for a permit, pay a business tax. What this will also require is similar to a hotel motel tax, which we have in the city, we will establish, will have to establish a similar structure to address these types of units, and it may be almost identical type of language, but we will be collecting tax like we do on hotels for short-term rentals, so we will know where they are by the registry, and of course, you can go online now and you can find out where Airbnb or the VNB
Will we be going to them to get these taxes?
We can. Unfortunately, a lot of these don't give a specific address, they kind of give you a pin on a map generally where they're located, so yeah, I guess.
Well, I, in, in real estate, we know a lot of them.
Well, we'll, we'll do what we can to try to do that, and of course, whether or not they're notified specifically, if we can't find them, the ordinance still applies to them, just like it would, like the food truck thing, for example. So they will have to be inspected. The planning commission was pretty particular in wanting to make sure that there's a caretaker or some person that's responsible for addressing emergency concerns, let's say if they have a water pipe break or some security issue, that they can respond within an hour. That's kind of a compromise for a city this size, some cities require a quicker response, and some have allowed a longer one, depending on the size of the city. So those persons can take care of that issue. Also, there would be limits on the number of persons per bedroom and per home. There would be minimum lot sizes for the, for the bedroom, for the attached closet space, so it's pretty particular about these details. And again, if you haven't already read that, you might wanna pay ti, particular attention to that. And any of the parking area that's required, that I mentioned earlier, just to be held surface of dust, repulsive. No parking be permitted on the yards or in unimproved spaces. They'd be required to carry liability insurance, and there would be no short-term rental, which would be allowed for less than 24 hours, so. Those were the, the details of the conditions that were included in the ordinance, and again, as I mentioned earlier, those are similar to those in other communities in Tennessee that have enacted an ordinance based on this new state law. Again, the planning commission did review this in, in several meetings and came up with all these details and restrictions and requirements for them, and does recommend approval. and restrictions and requirements for them, and does recommend approval of this, uh.
Bill and I discussed right before this meeting, one other thing that we need to do is set, um, a fee for the permit that hasn't been done in this ordinance. So, really, to move forward, um, before we can start issuing permits, council's going to have to also determine that.
Yeah, in the hotel motel tax draft that I had at the very back of the package, I, I think I identified a $25 fee. That'd be the registration fee.
Did you see how much the fees were before?
Well, we don't have.
A lot of cities do, do have different fees, depending on the, on the city.
Is that for you?
High fees.
Now, that's, you know, it can be changed, adjusted, whatever.
Might want to look at, at some other cities that, that have these, that have the fees. Some of them, um, have a much higher permit fee.
What, what are they ran, running?
Well, I don't have that information right in front of me, but I had, uh, Latasha had done some research on that for me at some point.
So, if we move this on the council, we need to move another ordinance on as well for.
Fees?
The fees and the hotel motel tax.
Well, they would need to be passed at the same time, I would think, cause I don't.
That's what I'm saying.
Think you're going to want to issue a permit without having that, having that established.
And, and we could arrange that, because our, our ordinance change to the code of ordinance is only takes two readings, where, uh, zoning code change is going to take two readings plus a, you got a wedged in there, a public hearing. So, we can make that.
It should still work. The timing.
Motion sent on?
Have motion. Councilman Overton, is there a second?
Second.
Second, uh.
Thank you, George.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Uh.
Nah. Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Bill. All right, number 25, Richard DePriest.
This is a, uh, our annual street and stormwater maintenance report. Um, this past year, we implemented a new work order system that's been able to track our different works, different types of work, uh, a little better, and keeping track of how many work orders are completed, when they get started. Uh, just a lot more detail oriented. Um, as you can tell, there's, from the stormwater side, we did 149 completed work orders. Um, that's not including any large project, but as far as just our routine maintenance, whether it's cleaning out ditches or cleaning out catch basins, that type of thing. Uh, the streets, we had 156, sign shop, 68. Um, that definitely does not include the, um, green man repairs. Uh, those were, there's at least five times that. On that note, the, uh, green man we look to be taken down in the next two weeks, starting the construction on putting the lights in next week. Um, waiting on T-DOT's approval on being able to do temporary shutdowns. Um, but as far as major projects, of course, we got Gray Street widening completed. Um, I think it's turned out, turned out very nice. I know there's some happy citizens in that area. Um, we are about 90% complete on the Belvedere Lake Shore drainage improvement. Um, hope to be done with it within the next couple of weeks. Uh, we've been out there, I think, 14 weeks now, so be, uh, good to get that one wrapped up. Uh, coming up for this, uh, the year we're in, of course, we got the Southwater and East Winchester culvert replacements that, um, would have liked to already gotten started, but with staffing and other projects lasting longer, it's taken us a little longer. But if there's any, anybody's got any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Magnificent job on Gray Street, magnificent job. A lot of constituents were very pleased with him.
Any other questions? Thanks, Richard. Nick, number 26.
And just as Richard was reporting on the stormwater, uh, utility maintenance, we want to also give you an update and report on our stormwater utility administration. Uh, some of it is, um, good information, and then the other is a requirement that we have with TDEC. Uh, so you're seeing our annual report that we have to submit to the state of Tennessee. Uh, so all good stuff, though, and, um, I'll hand it over to the man with the plan here, our, uh, stormwater utility manager, Lance Wagner.
Thank you, Nick. Good evening, council. Uh, some of this is a formality. We have to present our annual report in a public forum. This is our public forum of choice. So, we do this every year in September to update you and let you know that we have submitted as we're required. Um, but I want to hit some of the highlights of that report, the highlights of what the stormwater program's been doing. And I'll try to keep it quick and, and brief. Uh, construction stormwater, uh, part of our, what we do is we inspect, uh, construction sites, and then we permit and review. Uh, we had over 1,041 development plans reviewed through stormwater, uh, and through engineering this year. Again, we're up on the intergov system now. That system's starting to work, so we can track this stuff a lot better. So, uh, it looks like a huge upswing from last year. It's probably on par with last year with a little upswing, but, uh, we will be able to track that a little more. 93 active land disturbance permits. So, uh, the stormwater office, again, uh, issues, reviews, and, uh, um, specs, sites under the land disturbance permit. So, 93 active permits in the site, uh, in the city. Now, imagine that's 2.45 square miles of land that's being turned up right now. So, across our city, two and a half square miles of land is under grading at this moment. Illicit discharge program, the state requires, we have an illicit discharge program. We inspected 23 illicit discharge complaints and, uh, kind of boiled that down to 15 investigations. That's not including the Town Creek seep issue. Uh, a lot of you are familiar with the Town Creek seep, and that's an ongoing issue where underground petroleum, uh, from, um, uh, fuel stations of sort is passing through to Town Creek. TDEC is under that, or is on that, um, TDEC is in charge of that investigation, and they continue that work. Uh, so we can drill down if you want more information on that. Post-construction program, TDEC also requires us, under our MS4 permit, to look at what sites are doing for post-construction stormwater. So, once a site's built, they put in a fire retention system or rain garden, uh, those kind of things. We have to monitor those and make sure they're keeping up with them. We require annual reports yearly to come back into the stormwater department, and we try to get out and inspect those. Uh, we try to hit about 10% per year, and last year, we got about 10% of those done. That started about, uh, 2015 in earnest here, and so we're really just now starting to get this program up and going. So, it's up and going. Municipal housekeeping, uh, we also have to consult with Public Works, utilities, and others to make sure that the city's keeping their house and their affairs in order. Uh, we have, uh, SWIP, Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plans with each of those, uh, departments, and we meet with those, uh, those departments pretty much annually now to make sure they're up, up to, uh, keeping those up to date and keep them up to date with those per, those, um, plans. Uh, I will say Richard DePriest did a great job this year on his. Uh, we identified a few things on his site, and he jumped on that real quick and got those fixed up for us. So, I appreciate that, Richard, and, and Public Works. Um, so that was good stuff. All right. Public, uh, public education and outreach, uh, we're always pretty high in that one and that arena, and this year was no different. Uh, with COVID, we did have a few, there we go. With COVID, we did have a few setbacks on what we can do. Uh, we're a big sponsor of the Tennessee Stormwater Association runoff 5K. That was canceled last year. Now, some of you may know, we just had it again for this year, so it was back on this year. But that was canceled last year. We did work within the school system to make sure that, uh, every fourth grader was exposed to what, um, we call it the Creeder, um, Creek Critters Program. It's a program sponsored by the Cumberland River Compact, and we help bring them up and expose all students to, uh, what's in their creeks and their rivers in here in Sumter County. All right. That generally wraps up what the state requires us to do. Now, as you know, we got to fund ourselves, and, uh, we started the utility. So, as a quick update on the utility side, we collected about $1,800,000, uh, last year, which is on par with what we expected. Uh, billing was a little more, collections a little bit less, but that's on par with what we expected, and that keeps us funded. Uh, we weren't able to spend all the money last year because of staffing issues. We are only keeping one stormwater staff, um, and, uh, only keeping one stormwater staff going right now because we can't get people to apply for the second one. We budget for two stormwater staffs, or two stormwater staffs, excuse me, two stormwater crews in Public Works. We're only keeping one of those staffed up right now. So, if we had more staff, we could do more work. We could address more things. And, um.
Is it based on pay?
In my humble opinion, yes. Um, and so I think staffing is a, is a, is a big issue for us. Um, part of my highlights, as you've seen, we've just recently lost our stormwater coordinator. And that wasn't all based on pay, but I will say the job she got with the Army Corps of Engineers does pay more. And so, uh, that's going to be an ongoing theme, I think, but I think your answer is yes. All right. Uh, some of the initiatives we got going on is our mapping. Uh, for the first time, we're really doing a good job of getting mapping in and building the stormwater maps. Uh, we're doing that with our GIS department and our IT department, and I'm really proud of where that's coming and how well we've, we're doing with that mapping program. All right. Uh, Richard mentioned the Belvedore to Lake Shore Improvement. That was a project that's been around for a while. We're ecstatic to have that going on and be wrapping up. That's probably been around seven years or so, but we're glad to get that one going. We're moving on to Anthony Street Project, uh, another older project that, that needs work. It's in the 5th District, Mr. Alexander. And so, uh, hopefully in the next year, we'll get some legs under that project and get that under construction. All right, we can talk about some drainage studies that are going on if you'd like. Um, but as a, a little bit of the, the staffing highlights, I will say we did just hire a brand new young engineer, Ryan Ford. He started with us about three weeks ago. Uh, he'll be doing plans review in-house with us. So, we're, uh, he was approved, or his position was approved in the last budget. We have hired him in and brought him on board and getting him trained up as quick as we can. So, we're, we're happy to have him on board and happy to have that, that him as a resource. With that, I'll open the floor for any questions.
Are there any questions?
Great report.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, guys, I appreciate your time. Thank you.
End of the agenda items. Anything in other business? Anybody up here? Mr. Overton?
Could I just want to remind everybody that 3rd Thursday this, this week, and also the Saturday nights, a tractor pull at the Sotoma Club at the Triple Creek.
Anybody have anything else? Anybody? Department heads? Any department head have anything? Like, like everybody jumping up?
Uh, I wanted to give you all an update on our repaving program. Uh, I know you all know, last year, we did lose our assistant city engineer to a, a higher-paying job, and it was not done well. Uh, but, uh, he was the one that managed our paving, uh, program and, and setting up the recommendations for it. So, we've, we were able to finish out last year's money really well, uh, but setting up this year's program, uh, we've struggled to get that together. So, I want to give you an update. We haven't brought that list to you yet. You've appropriated a million dollars, uh, to spend. Uh, what we want to do, um, is, is bring you a list that is, uh, that, that will, that will handle a, a good amount of money, but it's not going to get us all the way there. But these are going to be the no-brainer roads, uh, that, let's get some stuff done before the winter sets in, and that'll allow us time to organize our thoughts and get our plan together to finish this, uh, this money out when, uh, spring allows, uh, for us to pave. So, what I would ask for you at this time is, if there are roads that are in your districts that you're aware that, um, you know, they absolutely need to be paved in the next year to two years, um, shoot me a text, email, give me a call. Um, I plan to be back, if, if not in two weeks, then four weeks, uh, with, with this, this initial list for us to go ahead and, and get a slew of roads done before, uh, we get too cold. So, that's the plan, and please reach out to me, and I'll try to send a message to, uh, Mr. Fennell and Ms. Love, just so that they know as well. So, any questions about that?
Oh, thank you.
Deal. Next.
Uh, Bill McCord. I, I don't know if the mayor meant to mention this or not. I just wanted to get it on the record because it might come back to you in next week's meeting. There might be a request for a waiver of a food truck rally permit, so we'll just see how that goes. So, I just wanted to get that on the record.
Good evening, council. Just wanted to update everybody about the fire truck that I spoke about a few weeks ago. Um, we had GNW Diesel, they performed an inspection of the motor. I reported on that with the catastrophic failure. Uh, they did look at, at the, possibly the final replacement motor, and they, they quoted me slim to none on that one. Uh, we did have the city shop look at it just to get a second opinion, and they're in concurrence with GNW about the catastrophic failure for the motor. So, just updating you and maybe looking for some guidance from the council. Uh, the apparatus is a 97-model Central States Fire Apparatus. It's 24 years old. If you, uh, if you add the mileage on the odometer and the engine hour, it's just about 975,000 miles on that motor. So, we have gotten our, our money's worth of that apparatus. Uh, we do currently have 400,000 in our FY '22 CIP budget. Uh, we've got plans to include the same amount in next fiscal year, and what we were trying to do was essentially establish a replacement cycle for fire apparatus. Your fire pumpers, like this one is, generally spends about 15 years in frontline service and five to six, potentially seven years in reserve service as a backup, and then you cycle them out of the fleet. Um, if we do start to pursue a, a replacement fire truck, it's going to be about a 13-month lead time for delivery, probably with an, an additional 90 days of just going through the specification and build process. So, I just wanted to update the council, potentially get some guidance here in the future. Uh, we only have one reserve fire truck at, now, with, uh, Reserve Rescue One being out of service. So, if we do have one or two go down, we'd have to go into like a backup plan of using a brush truck as a frontline fire apparatus. So, I'm here to answer any questions if I can, and just get some guidance from the council if possible.
Are there any guidance?
Well, as you know, chief, I mean, I think all of us support us getting a new truck, but, you know, we can't, we, I don't think we can commit from one budget year to the next without us voting on it, but, um, you know, uh, I, I don't know what that, what will that new apparatus cost?
Um, the last one's about 567,000, and you figure there's been at least a 10% price increase. Somewhere around 625 is going to be my estimate.
Well, I mean, my suggestion, Bill, if we're going to do it, is we need to appropriate it, the, the rest of it to, to get it done. Cause I, I mean, I don't think legally we can commit to next year's budget when, you know, we got a long time before that happens. So, for us to tell you to go ahead and order it and not have enough money, I think that'd be crazy, but.
Oh, I, I agree.
If we're going to do it, I think we need to appropriate the money, just go ahead and order it, be done with it. I mean, that's my thinking, so.
So, we're talking that if you order it today, it would be another 15 months?
Uh, uh, if we started the process today, about 15 months, if we decided to, to just say we're going to do it arbitrarily.
But you have to put somebody down on it, don't you, sir?
You have, do you have to put a, a deposit on the vehicle when you order?
Uh, well, any money that we put down, uh, including the money that we have currently, CIP would result in some discount because it's a saving in interest. Uh, so, I mean, that does.
That's my recommendation. If, if, if we have to have one, we need to get one, so.
We definitely don't want to be 15 months from now saying we need to do that.
There's no way, uh, the, the fire apparatus manufacturers with some of the COVID money out there were inundated with orders.
And I want the mayor to be involved on this as well, but I, I mean, I think.
What he's got, yeah, and, and.
I think if we just put it on our next work session, and you can get us some hard figures, then we'll have more that we can discuss.
Okay.
Perfect.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I appreciate you, Jeff, bringing that to our attention, because we need.
Really?
Yeah, five files.
Thank you. I, I, the department appreciates, and I appreciate it. Thank you very much. And I'll have those numbers for you, uh, here next week, at least some budget numbers from the vendor. Thank you.
Hopefully, get it for the work session two weeks from now.
Yeah. Any other department heads? Anybody else? If not, is there a motion?
Most adjourned.
Have motion adjourned, seconded by a council motion. Start adjourned.